Your call for the meetings.
Um, Gary Daigle.
You're calling.
Gary Daigle. Sean Smalley. Joe Grossman.
Here.
Debbie Hamilton. Michelle Sumner. Lisa Woods.
Here.
And Larry Whitaker is excused tonight.
Introduction of media. Here. Anyone wishing to speak before the agency tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Speaker forms are back there on the table. Please turn off your cell phones. Or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees, I don't see any.
No.
If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will be automatically muted upon entry and will need to identify yourself. If your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. To use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen with an image of a hand. Public comment, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Do we have any public comment?
Nope.
Consent agenda, the minutes from the June 12, 2023 minutes, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? I second the motion for June 12, 2023. Any discussion? And to approve the consent agenda, vote please.
Daigle.
Aye.
Smalley.
Aye.
Grossman.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Sumner.
Aye.
Woods.
Aye.
Noshia Carries.
Agency business.
I'll be Christie.
Is there any agency business? We are working on a project with a current person, but we're not ready to talk about it yet, but it involves property we purchased. But we'll, we'll give the details once that happens, but we've got to put together a budget and a proposal now.
Report to discussions.
What's the update on, on that transmission?
That's what we're just talking about. Thank you. Thank you for just blowing the entire invent of secrecy.
We'll take, we'll take the proposal to the task force. Well, the purchases, but the proposal for the property. But I can give a little brief update on the applications and the bank building, if it's like, yes. So as far as approvals that we have already approved, we have the three for more and two for root store and slash spa that were completed, some closing one of them out for web tracks tomorrow. And then we have potential three to five applications that we're working with businesses on as far as getting their information in for an application proposal to take to the task force. And then the bank building, so Rayburn Roofing has been working on the roof, the upper and the lower roof. So they are hoping to be completed any day mid month here. And then we'll just have the sprinklers and the rest of the week. So it's getting close. Hopefully we have it by the end of the year.
Do I have anything else? Leading the chair. Well, a brief recess until the city council meeting started at seven o'clock.
I get, go ahead.
Everybody can stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visual liberty and the rest of the world. Roll call.
Counselor Grossman.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Woods.
Here.
Counselor Daigle.
I'm here too.
Counselor Whitaker is excused tonight. Mayor Sumner. I'm sorry, yeah. Counselor Smalley.
Any media present? Anyone wishing to speak before the city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off with silence then during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees, if you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself with, if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the ring, raise your hand feature. Use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of the hand. Reminder for council, please speak into your microphone when talking so everyone can hear you. Public comment, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up for the microphone. Any on agenda items? Next thing is a proclamation. Dr. Hersher, can you come up there to the podium, please? So us as the city council would really like to thank you for your service to our community. A little bit about Dr. Hersher is between him and his father, he has actually, we've had a Dr. Hersher in our city for 71 years. Pretty long time for the city of Sutherland. The words that he has always said, which is pretty magnificent, as he says, if you enjoy your work, your job, you never have to go to work. And that's pretty, pretty exciting to have a job that you love that much that it's like never having to work. We did do a proclamation that I'd like to read to everybody here. Whereas Dr. Luke Hersher continued a legacy and tirelessly served the community of Sutherland for 40 years as a physician and community member. His father, Dr. Fred Hersher, opened the practice in 1952 and served the community for 31 years. And whereas Dr. Luke Hersher spent countless hours in service to our community through many local organizations, which include Sutherland Fire Services Working Group and Medical Advisor for Sutherland Emergency Operations. And whereas Dr. Luke Hersher delivered babies for 22 years, ran the clinic at the Douglas County Jail for 16 years while operating his medical practice, enjoyed the privilege of training many nurse practitioners and medical students, provided work experience to many Sutherland and Oakland High School students to further their medical careers, provided low cost sports physicals to Sutherland and Oakland High School students, doctors for Camp Millennium for over 20 years and mentored many physicians, and therefore be a resolve that the city of Sutherland joins its community members in recognizing Dr. Luke Hersher for his efforts in making Sutherland a better place to live. With your grandkids and her family. Thank you very much.
Just want to say that she mentioned clinical, the Douglas County Jail I did for 16 years. That just blinked in my mind around now, most of you guys. I was honored and privileged to go back to city of Sutherland where I was literally born. State Street here in Sutherland and based in Sutherland. People would come into my office and say, how long have you been here? Asking how long I was the doctor here? And I'd say 65 years. Do to get that fountain of youth? They didn't realize they were asking how long I was here. Anyway, it's been very unique. Wonderful. Other on his way to person to do for an interview stopped in Sutherland for rest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto the consent agenda. Have a motion for July, July 10, 2023 minute. I'll make a motion. Second. My motion in a second. Any discussion? And both.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Noshia Carries.
On the council business, draft ordinance, regulation, occupancy of recreational vehicles, staff report. Council, Madam Mayor, Amy Chertier, City Planner, or excuse me. So this is the follow up. We worked with Chad. Chad's this last time. And coming up with the draft ordinance for the prohibiting deciding inside of RVs. So for last month's council meeting, we brought back to you guys the draft ordinance for review discussion and to for your. Do you have a motion?
No, we don't want a motion. This is just for discussion, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Oh. No.
Oh, no.
We aren't wanting a motion or approval. It's just for discussion and input right now. That's my fault. I didn't tell you to shake that off.
Okay. All right. So discussion finished?
Pardon me?
Discussion is?
Yes, yeah. One last, we, at the last stopping with that, you know, one more time, bring it, letting the public come see it, like getting your input, one last piece of final refinement for you to say, all right, bring this back. We're ready to consider approval.
So is there anything in this that would address if someone's visiting, like a grandparent goes and wants to stay in their RV, in their driveway for a weekend, for three days, that, that this outlawed that?
Technically, just like the development states now, it's prohibited or the same type of currently is for like driven. Is there any of the green work? Combinate of emergency situation? Well, I guess with the output that was requested done, the best for sure to have the community wanted absolutely no reference. Take this for them.
It should, but yes, we can if you want us. There should be some flexibilities. There's, there's always conditions. If we make a hard pass rule and you know, they're just making situations that are going to come up. Merit allowing that to happen. And I'd also like to point out that not everybody lives in a in a small housing development. Lot of strong projects. If you, for example, if you live in a hillside residential, you know, I have more than acre of land on myself. Having a trailer close to the house you're or street.
Right. But then we get back to the same thing that we asked in our survey and want to see that part of an application. And plus then we don't develop charges because those people aren't utilizing these paying those development charges. Plus then the sewer connection, water connection, electrical.
Well, the other thing we're doing is we allow people to live in tents out here. And they don't have any facilities, so we don't want people like that. Have a decent place to house and I, I don't know. I don't think that's great. I, I think there should be some restrictions, but I think we need to be flexible. Certain things.
I just bring you the information that's, you guys wanted the public outreach, the public outreach stated that I think it was like 76%. So it's still, it's still up to you guys, but the public.
Well, it could be somebody that needs senior care.
And we do have family medical hardship application. We have a certified dwelling unit, but they go through that proper permitting and application. Not in an RV.
Okay.
Doesn't be building.
Why would you want somebody that's staying in a little trailer by themselves? That doesn't make sense.
Well. For one thing, I, I did some research. There's, there's a definition for this, but it's a work, like working home to me, not running, you're like I couldn't, but these people may have a job or they may be retired on social security, can't really afford a house, they can't afford to live in a trailer park. Not cheap to do either one. So there may be some I just I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, you're kind of you're staying. Unfortunately, we already had this input on over 70.
You know, what's that saying? Don't take a problem to your boss without having a possible solution type of thing. And so when we look at that possible problem, I think that we're in the process of working on a possible solution. And that is we're working with St. Vincent de Paul and, and neighbor works at maybe built, creating a diversified affordable housing plan unit development that add housing for various elements of the community that are low income and can't find it. So maybe rather than, I'm just saying, rewriting the PUD code, let's look at options to actually solve the problem that is find housing, find a way to construct and have nice affordable housing that would supplement the need for anybody to even have an RV. Just throwing it out there. We're working on it. It's one of those things that it could
because technically it's already been prohibited. It's prohibited in the development of, this is just making it clear, cleaner, stronger process. And it's also not just farm city. Don't know to state rules to the jurisdiction ways that like Douglas County allows you to submit a covenant reporting, covenant on your property that you're holding formal subsequent county because you're taking a risk of being RV to other people.
So did you guys read the ordinance? And that was my only comment was just kind of a short. If that was something.
So I guess at this stage, we would ask what direction we, you know, is, if there's recommended changes to this ordinance, or do you want us to proceed with the process of posting it council meeting for adoption? We're looking for that next step direction.
But that could open up, you know, probably the wind of bullshit. With the short term limit of so that might not even
Just kind of run out. It's been the summer of the year.
Right. And I've already seen one upgraded, bigger. Has more pop outs on it. So you've got to put down someone. They can afford brand new one. Sorry.
I don't. I would like to say if they're temporary relatives coming Christians, coming Christmas, Thanksgiving, whatever, or they're having their move. Like it's going to be my case. Then there is KOA and there is the golf court. Oh, you know, that they need to pay, pay that. That's what I'm going to do. If we, I need to have my so it's not like you're nothing.
I don't have, myself, I don't have an issue with giving them a week, possibly two, if you're going to have company or something. But beyond that, I think this is
Is that where the hardship comes in? Is it like a certain amount of time they give them or how does that work?
Temporary family medical hardship. It's for medical purposes. So then it's manufacturing.
But also the point is those RVs should be mainly property.
All right. That's how it all is still.
Visual part. You're not allowing anybody to live. Where you're eliminating the elimination and the water.
Your water, your electrical. Fire, 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 there's trash. Someone looking at you.
Well, I was sent that one picture that I sent you guys that the little trailer, scruffy looking trailer was between two houses and it was on fire. And why the other two houses didn't catch a fire? We have a possible fire department. But that's, that's dangerous. There would have been two homes right there. Well, that's true, but it's, they're legally not
I think it is important, Madam Mayor, that we get some clarity and certainty with regards to allowing for a one or two week short term. We can put that into the ordinance and get Chad and staff to write that out and bring it to you. But it would be really important that you kind of all summarily agree on that and stand behind it. So when we do add it and there'll be criteria that come in, apply for permit to do it. There would be you know, a possible permit fee so we could pay for staff time to go out there and make sure everything is safe, appropriate for the community. But not, nothing great, but at the end of the day, if we were to bring something back to you, it would have that specificity in it. And if you can't, I mean, we just can't say just call us when somebody's going to be in an RV and we won't do anything for two weeks, you know, there's got to be a system.
At the same time, planning commission recommended this option. That was an option, but planning commission did recommend great because of staff time enforcement.
Well, let's just put it this way. It doesn't matter what the planning commission recommended. The city council can make a decision.
So where does everybody start of whether we leave it as it is or recommend like the for visitors?
Or just leave it, yeah.
So Mayor.
Yes.
This is Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. I just want to also inform everyone that there is a provision of state law that does require local governments to permit occupation of RV, RVs in certain emergency situations. When, when someone's home or manufactured dwelling home is destroyed due to, you know, wildfires, earthquakes, flooding, storms of that nature. Then under state law, they have a right to actually live in an RV. So I think for emergency purposes, we may be already covered by state law. For the other purposes, such as, you know, someone, grandparents in town for Thanksgiving or whatever, that would not be covered. So that's really, I think, probably where you're going to focus most of your attention on if you want to create an exception.
Do we have to put that in the ordinance that it's okay for an emergency purpose?
No, because we already have it drafted as, except as otherwise permitted by state law ordinance code. So that's what that language is meant to do.
Got it. Okay.
It's tough. It is. Mom, dad, come down for a personal break. I want to say feel such good faith, like your stance, pardon, divorce and target.
That's also completely driven too. So would anyone really know?
We want to, we do want to know. I think that's a real critical piece. If you're going to come in and allow somebody, I, I just think the process ought to be systemic enough to include letting us know applying for permit for none other than public safety issues for whatever that may be. I disagree with what you're stating. If we do vote that we make sure that there that's a person being that paid and the police department is doing the science of police force and monitor. And what we for and make that, where you guys decide on the fine. I think it needs to proactively administer. Otherwise six months come by and we're more perfect.
The public spoke overwhelmingly. 76% or whatever it was. And I'm perfectly fine with that. I don't have a real issue for one week, but I think that becomes a pain because somebody's got to watch it. They've got to do paperwork. But I understand that if you want mom and dad, you know, in your own place, you don't have better for but I don't think it's going to be hooked up like they would normally stay in there. So I can go either way.
I, I agree. About having systems in place so that if someone has come to the there's procedures, there has to be, you know, applications filled out, be paid and then follow up it's set up properly. So it's not a fire.
Of the lot, like a lot of cities. Resource resources to do all of that.
Just going to say if somebody's going to have to do that. Well, it's just the same as a drive by. People on vacation, you want to drive by, people requested. There should be appropriate fee or permit, which includes the monitoring. So you go down and hit a Christie and Christie, I need my own permits. I mean, I'm just going through the process. So and then if it's four weeks later and your RV's still there, they think you're
Somebody's going to have I think you're getting, you're getting too much.
Let's turn everybody's house on to RV.
Yeah, I think exactly how it is.
Correct.
Totally RV part. Good.
I was really torn on this myself. I was telling, I don't know which way to go, but it's your call, not mine. So.
Well, I think the public has spoken. The public has spoken. I think it's going to
when the survey went out, it went out to all, all sort of government. But not all of our citizens voted on, only the ones who cared about the issue.
Right.
So we have the, and there's the people who I don't want to generalize anyone, but the people who it may affect the most probably didn't answer those surveys. So I don't know that even though the people who answered those surveys are the ones answer those surveys, so I don't know that even though the people who answered those surveys are the ones that they're the ones who don't want it, obviously. But the people who are gonna be more affected probably did not answer. That's just my feeling. Exactly.
Well, that one, but the meaning, yeah.
So even though we, we think that the forty of our citizens that, you know, I've talked to a lot of our citizens about this very topic because I'm also the one, I don't want an RV park next to my home either, but then there are where we, you know, having the permit, we can have someone in our, there are RVs for that's not a bad solution.
I'm not sure if it's worth for all that, have that much extra on the staff to come out and check it for your permit, to pay a fee um for all that, I don't think we're gonna get well, many citizens are doing all of that.
Well, what's going to happen is people are going to anyway, they're gonna get fined, they're gonna have to go out and if someone is plain, plain driven, at least there would be resources and for those who are committing, they're gonna buy by the rules.
So this is where you go from councillor to councillor and say, what's your decision?
But if you're deciding, oh, I think we gotta say it, have to go to RV park. Yeah. It is, it's a tough one. Yeah, it is.
I think we should go with that.
Public comment?
Go ahead.
Right now, sacred, for side drive, beautiful settlement. Um briefly on the voting, seventy-four percent. There was a question missing on the ballot, which I wasn't even aware of it till after it already come and gone and the the ballot thing had closed off and I couldn't even get into it. But there was a question missing, are you a homeowner? A lot of people might have voted, yes, I wanna do it. Might not have been homeowners in the community. And a lot of people who voted yes also might not have lived in if you have a renter who wants to park an RV on the, on the property. You're, you're in a lose-lose situation, the renter has nothing to lose. What are you gonna tax him later in the year, assess his property? You can't, you have to go to the landlord, ask it back to the renter, and you're in a vicious circle and you're never gonna win. As far as the permit, um yes, exceptions are wonderful, they're tricky, they're complicated. Um my first thought is, how are you going to enforce this when they say, oh, my, it broke down, I can't move, they're still sick, I can't go. It's winter time and I can't travel over the pass. Now are you gonna say it's a thousand dollars a day and are you really gonna buck up and enforce that? I, I challenge every one of you that you're not gonna do it unless it is a homeowner with deep pockets. Then you might say, I'm gonna assess your property. Um if you've got the money to buy a nice smaller home and drive around, somebody might have the money to add on your house. And then you will be collecting some property tax and it'll be worthwhile because of revenue good for your schools, please, but you know. Um it will be dumping black water, it will be dumping gray water, Oregon doesn't allow you to even dump gray water in the, in the city. I actually had, this is one of my topics of the evening, and I'd like to read my two paragraph line here. Uh and then I'll shut up and forever hold my piece about RVs. Okay, RVs on private property. It's come to my attention that the issue of RVs and trailers parking to private property has not yet been laid to waste, laid to rest. I want to again voice my and others' forceful opposition to this idea. I understand that some people working with the city and maybe on the council may have personal reasons for wanting an RV allowed on their property or in the city, some employees may be using their hearts instead of their heads to be swayed into a lack of action. Um granting leniency or making exceptions. This is not the job of the city employees, the council. You must make the hard calls and consider the needs of not just the citizens of Settleum and as taxpayers. But you need to think of the future of this wonderful little town and the future will, and look like Settleum is on a precipice of greatness. The outstanding improvements like Grand Central Stage, Forest Ponds, and the many entertainment opportunities are starting to propel on the map, the place you might wanna live. You must stay focused, you have to choose performance over popularity. It feels good to give in and allow the needy RVer or veteran to camp in the senior citizen parking lot across from the police station or park on private property. There are sorrowful eyes and stories to be moved. However, these heartfelt actions may lead to the city's ruin in the blink of an eye, I have seen it personally. All the hard work, the park, the pond, BlackBerry, all these things are bringing people from all around the area. Only will spread the word that Settleum is just an RV dump and a trailer trash city with weeds growing out of the sidewalks. Please don't continue to go down the wrong path by making exceptions for the RV plague that will grind your wonderful city to a halt. Strive for performance over popularity, if you do so, popularity will come, it will bless, a blessing at last. I've said my piece, please don't allow this to invade your city. Your taxpayers will leave and run with their money and you will be left with a burden that you cannot afford.
Thank you. I believe we have four, we could go ahead and go ahead.
Sure, real quick?
Yes.
We've all seen videos, level D, seven sixty still mounting. Michelle's neighbor. But uh we've all seen videos of Portland and, and the RVs and the vehicles piled up beside the roads that the unhappy neighborhood people. So that's a real, so I think there should definitely be standards. Um but I wanna offer you tonight a real life story. Appreciate Mr. Diggle's uh flexibility uh view because about ten years ago, young woman our, our lives uh she was isolated from her home, it's a critic. She wandered Settleum at night. And we just thought that can't stand. But my wife had some health issues, just didn't want to stress it in our home. So I picked up a, I would say fairly dilapidated RV in uh Junction City, brought it down here for her to, I didn't want that, that thing in my yard. But this was a classic emergency. What were we gonna do with this girl? And so we thought, well, this will provide her space for a short term and uh we are in city limits, I don't think he would ever knew we had the RV, but uh we had it for about a month. And it was a, it was an option that though not desirable, it, it got her through top prime, now she's by the park in Roseburg. Great deal, guilty, uh so those things look up, but, but for that period of time, it was a relief, it's the only way we could deal with it. It's that ugly. But just a lot of
New and change for the thing.
We'll bring it back to you for, for proper posting, certainly you're even able to change your mind there if you want. We got our marching orders, thank you.
Okay, thank you. On to resolution twenty twenty-three point one zero, council priority.
Yes ma'am, speaking marching orders, I think this is a typical point every other year where we get together with council and staff and uh workshop and we start talking about what actions you want staff to fulfill uh our priorities for the next two years, so uh the resolution speaks for itself, staff report speaks for itself. Uh that i- it's clear uh and understandable. And uh exhibit A is the core of the document. And I hope you had a chance to see all those, the short medium and long term projects you've laid out for us to do. This is your time to uh amend and approve or approve as present.
Great, I like it.
It's kinda shared, we have that um temporary landscape gal, but uh she's pretty busy and so we guys kind of pick up but we should have been
Jerry, thanks for flexible, right?
Yes.
Which
and, and, yes, 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 that's the whole point about the studio planning process, that lays out your guidelines, your to-do list. But you may have something that's to do this number ten, that all of a sudden we got grant money to do it, it gets moved up to number two. So and YouTube as well, you may see something out there in the community throughout the year. Ask the whole council, get behind that, and we just add it to it and you know.
So can I get a motion on or discussion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three point one zero, council priority, twenty twenty-three to twenty-five? Take a motion for resolution. Any discussion?
This will be on our website too, so the whole community can see what you have directed city staff to execute over the next few years.
What's that? Jerry did this one. There was a couple typos, but Jerry did it.
Yeah, I had some trouble uh messing Publisher with PowerPoint, she had to help me with that.
Councillor Gressman.
Hi.
Councillor Hamilton.
Hi.
Councillor Woods.
Hi.
Councillor Dagel.
Hi.
Councillor Smalley. Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
On resolution twenty twenty-three point one one, surplus property, please withdraw vehicle, vehicle. That report.
Our council, Troy Mills, Chief of Police, um I have a staff report to vary in police department surplus property. Uh we currently have two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer patrol vehicle that is retired or, or let's just say it's second slide. Um as suggested motions to approve the resolution for surplus property or not approved.
We have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three point one one surplus property, roll the
Make that.
Second.
Awesome.
A motion, a second, any discussion?
What happens to the people? All say
Yeah, we have a script down uh back to the civilian model essentially, uh I think that's option.
Councillor Gressman.
Hi.
Councillor Hamilton.
Hi.
Councillor Woods.
Hi.
Councillor Dagel.
Hi.
Councillor Smalley.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Under contract award, wait street improvement, engineering design and construction cost estimate, that report.
Mayor, council, Chris Laver, community development. So the wait three um saga continues, so in preparation of the twenty twenty-four Safe Cross School application. We have advertised and are the request for proposals um for engineering and design services. With that, we received five Sid. They all by the July twentieth deadline, um and so the the proposal was to do the engineer design um and construction cost estimate for asphalt overlay, partial street reconstruction, curb gutter sidewalk, storm drain, infrastructure, crosswalks, rapid flashy beacon. Um retaining wall possibly along the wait street if necessary. Um and then a bridge just being across the street and reducing the weapon impact. So with that, um staff recommend awarding that contract, contract to Civil Solutions Engineering LLC in the amount of with the two hundred and thirteen thousand.
And I have a motion to approve contract awards to Civil Solutions Engineering LLC in the amount of two thirteen nine hundred S percent.
I'll make the motion that we approve it.
I'll take it. Motion is second, any discussion?
Not a shame we have to give so much money for somebody to have for me to get any work done.
We'll just think of the few million dollars we'll get back in return of it.
Yeah, I understand.
You're in the wrong profession then.
This is the missing piece that ODOT has been um advising us to go for in the first two rounds of the grant application, and so by having this readyness, ready for construction. We should
I understand. It's essential to have to make sure that they use this construction. And I don't wanna expand on that, but I won't. Basically, I think we, we want too much on expert stuff. A lot of things get done about expert fault. I understand.
Let's go.
Councillor Gressman.
Hi.
Councillor Hamilton.
Hi.
Councillor Woods.
Hi.
Councillor Dagel. Councillor Smalley. Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
On the Hartley Park Bicycle Path proposal, staff report.
Evening, council and Madam Mayor, Brad McDerris with community development. Um council is being asked to consider the Hartley Bike Park proposal submitted by Lumber at the Parks Committee meeting this meeting on May twenty-third, um they recommended for the the proposal onto council, it's in your packet, uh the proposal patient is the Hartley Bike Park between the dog park and the A Park. So that unused slope till I do believe you have Charlie here from Lumber and Lumber stands for the land of the bike riders. Here are a branch of the unpopular book, who is also um part of the organization that does our so I do believe Charlie's a very question.
Well, can I have a motion to approve Bicycle Path proposal from Lumber as present? Make a motion to
Second.
Now a session. Is representative here?
Good one, so we don't have any fun.
How you doing?
Good, how do you do?
Good. I have a question.
Yeah.
So is this made of uh like soft dirt or?
It's soft, there can be dirt.
Right.
Yes.
So is it going to create like a lot of dust for like the neighborhood or?
No.
Okay. I, I've, I've heard complaints in the past for other things, so I just wanted to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, it was
Well, I, I, even the bicycle in that neighborhood, I've got that.
I'm sure there's always gonna be someone that can find something.
This, this way should uh get ahead of that.
Yeah.
So, cool, okay.
How, how is work in terms of the city property and being developed into a bicycle park and liability, somebody gets hurt on on that particular property for doing an activity with
I, I think Chad can pipe in that, but hopefully at the end of the day, we'll be I think Chad can pipe in that, but hopefully at the end of the day, we'll be liable. Just like the splash park and. Yeah. We have a great law called recreational immunity. I don't know. Does this apply to Chad?
Probably not because recreational immunity apply has to recreation has to be the primary purpose.
So the intent would be at this point was we would drive an agreement between the city and Lombard to kind of similar to what we have with the dog park where they do the maintenance, carry the insurance. And then we would meet all of the city's requirements for that part.
So you have your own.
Who pays for the insurance for skate park? If you got four foot ramps and you're on a scale or the wheels this big, this big, which you're on face. I just thought that a bike jump with wheels this big that you ride over your head with. Without falling down. Less.
Like there's also terrain that moves, dirt moves.
I think it's the same thing when you get a special. We have to, but Chad said if it's for recreation.
This is no more dangerous than Cooper Creek.
Absolutely.
You guys do that.
Yes.
That's on county land.
I'm a firefighter on the vice president of Uncle Dello Club. I live here in Sutherland, South Station. Most of the like it's Cooper Creek. We have an agreement with Water Control District and we have signage that says right. And I think Oregon law basically says if you don't charge money for for an event, then you're not liable. Kind of standard thing for recreation across the state. And also, if you're probably asking about funding, we are looking into grants. Our club is we're working on a five oh one C and the Ford Foundation has already already talked to them about it. They're very willing to they love to support grassroots things, grassroots things like this. The dirt shouldn't move too much because this crew, Charles and David and the guys, they will be out there quite often to make sure that if ruts start forming, because you really want this to be really smooth, because if it's designed and built right, it's really like a roller coaster ride. It's just like a roller coaster is designed with physics involved. We're talking about sign waves. I think it'd be a great thing for kids to learn in school, you know, it's it's math. And so it like this thing here is just a concept. The bottom part there is what they call a pump track and that's really cool because smaller kids and big kids like us. You can ride that without pedaling. You can actually use the forces of your bike inertia and you can pedal that or ride that whole thing without. Pedal. And it's great exercise and the location at Hartley Park is awesome because it's already a park. So, you know, maybe at some time they work at a table. So like parents can bring their little kids out, watch them. And the the other stuff up there, you know, it's going to be one of those things that you have to look at it and say, yeah, maybe I'm not for that. But I would imagine that these guys maybe in the future might have clinics, you know, like the kids want to come out and learn how to how to do these things. So, you know, it's these kind of parks are popping up in all kinds of cities. And that's just what Dylan said. I've been here since twelve and I can tell you, I am really proud to be in Sutherland. It looks so much better than it used to. And I heard, you know, when the mill was here, I mean, I love I love the timber industry, but I guess the old mill was kind of, the new one is just, I, you know, I have stores right next door. But I think this would really add to the park there. And, yeah, we'd really like to do a someday a walk through with public works folks. Kind of get a lay of the land and actually what what the property lines are. So we make sure that we don't interfere with any neighbors, you know, hopefully there's a lot of wisdom. So. Like you said, the dust is not going to, it's only going to be if there's two people behind each other, they might get a little dust in their mouth. It shouldn't be a problem. So, yeah, any questions?
I was just gonna say there's lots of trees and stuff around there that will soak that dust up anyway, but I've lived here thirty years and there's never been anything there really done to it. So I think it's. Anything for our kids.
Absolutely. There's, I mean, you gotta have a splash pad and lots of little things to look at. Once the kids start hitting that age where, you know, they're not interested in playing splash park. They're gonna know. Never want to grow up. It's not left for that intermediate age and trying to produce something for, you know, not just old folks, young folks, but the whole family.
Trying to make stuff like that.
Yeah, good. Yeah. I mean, I've got a thirteen year old and, you know, moves a little beyond playing splash park, but, you know, they get off the school. We we just want a place where, you know, we could go and play and not have, you know, trouble with other businesses and things like that. Have a place for.
What what's the timeframe, Gary?
And.
Forget the suffering.
Oh, uh, would like to, well, when the weather permits, but as soon as the fire season goes out and the moisture comes back in the ground, bring a little bit of dirt in, start building the all, well, it's all rock. There's about two inches of dirt. So we have to bring dirt to build up. And like have like to have it filled up over the over the winter and that way, you know, springtime makes it ready to go. We at least for the most part, like there'll always be, you know, oh, add this little feature or maybe change this just a little bit. We'll have to, you know, keep cleaning up the burn, you know, if there's burns or something where, you know, but. Yeah.
I'd like to suggest when you do get that done, to make it a big deal and have our chamber there and council and the paper.
Yeah, we did that with Cooper Creek. We finally finished it. It's had kind of like a celebration.
Yeah.
We have the newspaper there.
Absolutely.
Man, I want to make this a point. Hopefully they have cameras there.
Yeah, they have people to write on it. Okay.
It'll be something for everybody. And we do have.
Is there going to be a cost to the speed for this part?
We don't plan. The did Cooper Creek all with our own funding from the club. We're hoping, like I said, we're hoping to get grants and Ford Foundation, like I said, they're they're ready to go. And they don't have, like, most grants, you have a certain time of the year that you have to apply, apply anytime.
I did not to you guys. I just want to make sure we have the right Hartley. I don't think that one's right.
I clarified that with David. It was he inadvertently misspelled it in his paperwork.
Oh.
Art is nice, but I mean. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Counselor Gressman.
There was one more discussion.
There's one. Yeah.
We can't.
Got to finish the.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, it was just a kid raised. Someone was wanting to talk on, raise their hand.
Do we have a public comment on that? One minute. Sure. I like the idea about the bike park that our guys and friends that talk about. I think it is really cool that they like to get the bike. Because I love biking. I can go to Ben, you may go up a super, you know, so down right down the trails. And I think it'd be really cool to have a bike trail near my house, kind of. I think it might make it better if I can do this. I can't do gaps, but hopefully over time this place teaches.
All right, we'll do this just for you.
What's your name? What's your name, sir? Thank you. You've got your wish already. Under public works, wait for a favor plan for cliff for this approval. Staff report.
And Mayor Council, parents want public works. You read the staff report. Our forklift is in pretty rough shape. It's twenty seven years old. The mast needs to be rebuilt and that's going to be like eleven thousand dollars plus. And so we decided to look into buying instead. Joey got three bids. The lowest bid is for the highster cafe material handling, the amount of thirty five thousand nine hundred dollars. And so the suggested motion would be to approve that Mr. Portland purchase of that highster model. H fifty UT for happy material handling in the amount of thirty five thousand nine. We just want to. And the amount of three one thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars as.
Perfect. My second fee to approve the first highster work with model H. Good, now that we got all that. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, I guess I was looking at. It's going to be uncomfortable. Every time I get a fourth, I'm on the dirt. I have a problem.
This is very similar to the one they have. They do have a little bit of gravel. They have they take totes of of dechlor product over to Fort's pond where, you know, it goes. Treat that corned water or it dumps out into Fort's pond. So they do have just a little bit of gravel, but mostly it's okay. And it worked when they have currently, it drives okay. It just won't do. So they don't have a problem getting started.
It sounds like this is an essential piece of equipment for water.
Essential. The mast froze the other day, well, a while back in that position and they couldn't unload what they need to unload. And that's when they got the guys out there and they said it needs to be built. Cost is. I believe these are pretty close to, yeah, it shouldn't be too long. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a long, a long time.
Here we are spending money again, but at least we get something.
All right, ready to go.
Counselor Gressman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley. Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
On reports, arts grant project update.
So a few years ago, starting in maybe probably twenty twenty, we had worked with ODOT on dashing weekends proposed for Central Avenue. They had installed the one at Comstock. There were two other proposed locations, one at Mardana and Central and the other at the crosswalk next to Abby from kind of last stop across to the. I guess perking off that Sunday. So we have received a draft copy of the contract to move forward with those and just kind of giving our heads up. Prove that. Not regarding that, but for Comstock and people are. To see if it's more. If you ask.
Every other meeting. Keep, keep on asking.
People ask me, I've got to ask them. They got a question. That's the latest movement.
Hey, city manager report.
I'm going to yield the floor to Gary to give you an update on the non-forale plant, which has been the bane of my existence for the past two and a half years. But where I think we're finally coming to the finish line.
Gary or Aaron?
I'm calling Aaron. Sorry. He's here. It's from what I was thinking. Was Gary short here?
Flying in his chairs.
So Matt Mayor, Council, and it's one public works again. Good news is we're making water out there, non-for elf reliably quality water. The downside is we can't make quite enough now at this time to meet demand. So Cooper Creek still has to run as needed, which is every second, the third day for a few hours. Fortunately, that means that we're still in that voluntary retention because used over our allotted amount. Really no way to get around that right now. So not in a water shortage per se, but we do have to kind of have that voluntary retention. Back to non P. They so they made water and sent it to town. We had to get this four day test and they achieved that in late June. And so now the next step is substantial completion. That's supposed to be August third. And there's no reason why they shouldn't achieve that date. They're a little behind and they're this company has struggled a little bit with some organizational things, purchase of the company of the construction arm of the country during our company during this project. But they're closing in on it. They ought to be able to achieve that. So we're looking for that. And then final completion will be September twenty. That's our plan. And hopefully they can. So if there's any questions on that.
How are the mixers?
The solar bees are, they're working away up there. They, we've tested the raw water just the other day. We haven't noticed a big difference yet, but when they put those in, they said they needed a hundred and twenty days to really optimum the test their effectiveness. So we're in about sixty five days or something. So we're short of that time by a substantial amount. And so we're still hoping. We kind of looked at it. We thought, hey, maybe we'll see an uptick or I mean, rather a downtick in the Mankinese. Pretty similar to what it was last year at this time. So we're still, we're watching them. They're working correctly. They're pumping the water. Hopeful that at that hundred twenty day mark. Show.
For non-for-else. If I hear you right, they will ask for acceptance July forty. Does that mean that it'll be producing at that time where there won't be a necessity that?
No, no, just to clarify, we are making water there and sending it to town full capacity right now.
Just all the water.
It's all the water that's available or that we can actually pump. And so our demand in August is our very highest demand, especially during hot weather. And so we just can't quite meet that. And normally this would not be an issue, but we've had this two year shutdown and we. We, we, we used Cooper Creek exclusively during the early stages of spring and. Late winter and spring and early summer, so we used up all of our allotted water, otherwise. Non-for elf is always going to do this in the late summer, it won't quite meet demand, but. And every other year after this, Cooper will have all that reserve and will be able to supplement, there won't be a portrayalment. And I'm not telling you that some catastrophic couldn't happen or terrible drought or. Something breaks down again and we, you know. But we wouldn't have used it. No, we wouldn't have, and um, so that, that's just why we're, why we're faced with uh. With what we're faced with right now. Anyway, that's my, I've, I've done, was there any other questions or?
All right, anything else? Under council comment, remember monthly meeting time is limited, please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting, now, counselor Grossman. Counselor President Hamilton.
Well. I just want to thank everybody for coming to Music Ops Central. Been a fabulous year, summer. Fine. Um, this Thursday is our last one for the season. And yes, as I posted today, the show goes on even though it's hotter than this. I think Elvis is going to probably be the hottest. He's going to be changing in and out of different costumes, I'm sure, unless he changes his mind, but um. We're. We're telling people to please bring your water, stay hydrated, um, bring your neck. Whatever the coolers, uh, go through the kids' flash pad misters, walk through there. Um, and just enjoy the last show of the season and. Um, it's been fabulous and everybody has been great, I got to say, for those who don't know, David Reo, of course, was our biggest. But we did not have one call at all, right, chief? And so we're really proud of that, we just thank our citizens and it's been great, so we're excited for next year, we'll start back in September.
Counselor Woods. You've put a lot of hard work into. You know, that's. Recognition, but I think everyone sees what you did to, to make that happen while which is important to me. So, great job, it, it really served our.
It was a team effort, uh, there was a few months where I was. You know, a little stressed, but at the end we got a great team, it's great, it's been great to have. Aaron and Troy, her fire department came today to our meeting and so just all, I can't thank the city. And everybody that was involved.
I want to say two, that started Thursday at six forty-five.
Oh.
Elvis requested six forty-five, so they'll go from six forty-five to eight fifteen. Sorry. Well. He's got to be. Sorry.
Counselor Daigle.
Uh, Chief Mills, actually this is kind of for you, but. My sister came over for the concert and actually we went camping that weekend, she lost her keys. He was really concerned about it, they were putting her on and we took off in the hills. Basically couldn't do anything all weekend, but the two young ladies in police department. I can't believe what they did to check that out, they found out on the T-Tag channel Fred Meyer. And they called Fred Meyer, got her phone number, her name, and they, and they saved the keys for us, of course, and of course whoever turned them in, we appreciate that. But those two young ladies. You deserve a little bit of a. Commendation for doing that, I think that would point me on what they had to do, and sure nice that they did, a really impressive gesture. So thank you and thank them for me.
Counselor Smalley.
Um, I really like the idea that bike park, partly. Stop up the kids, so we should be behind that. You did a big job.
Well, I also want to thank you for all your work, I know, uh, it was yourself for a little while there, you got with your team on it and. It has been a magnificent series, so I'm really impressed and now you know who's done real. And I know. And they're very nice and I, I really like the things that they do. So it, it has been fun and. Yeah, I really liked this, this, our bike thing too, I'm excited to see that come through someone. I think that's all I have, so moving on to public comment, the purpose of public comment is to allow citizens present. Information regarding items off the agenda, a time limit of three minutes for citizens shall apply, first one is Brett Hudson.
You're going to use this time.
Like three items. One of them already, and she very much, I, I like the second of the comments, so it's a great job that Debbie Hamilton and your committee did, the community is impressed. My wife and I used to be in the music entertainment business, I know how hard this stuff is and.
From the committee.
I'm tired. And I'm assignment. And all the other wonderful things that the city is doing, really needs to be added, the Ford pond project, the, the stage, uh. All the things, the bicycle park sounds wonderful, I think you, you've all put in a huge Herculean effort. Really should give yourself a big round of applause because it's impressive, it really is, I, I, I'm knocked out, really done a good job. I'm very proud. Honored to my uh needless concerns here that hopefully get your attention on. Weeds along Central. When my wife and I first decided to move up here to Oregon a couple of years ago. I was pulling into town with our load of luggage behind us and everything, so can you live for a town and then a settlement where my brother's been living for the past twenty years, that'd be kind of fun. But we got off the freeway and the first thing I started noticing is I'm looking through eyes of a potential home buyer. I'm looking around the streets and suddenly I see weeds down central, one end to the other, and it really hasn't changed much. And I was wondering if the city has considered maybe having one of the local clubs, Lions or Rotary, just maybe take care of that and maybe get some name recognition for it. And if, and if they can't do it alone, I'm, I'm willing to get out there with my weed whacker and walk up and down the street.
I thought you were retired.
I need something to do. I have a brand new weed whacker.
That's great.
But I've been wanting to walk up down the street, I might need a little bit of help with uh traffic control, make sure I don't get run over. But just a simple little thing like that would make the world of difference, because when we saw the weeds and all that, I'm telling you, for the first six months. We did not look in Southern, we looked at Millroads and Winchester and elsewhere. And if it wasn't for a lot, because every six months and everything we wanted. Got, got swooped up in a heartbeat before we could even put a bid on. Fortunately, we found the home of our harsh desires up by Cooper's Creek and, and where it's all up, which is a beautiful place we found. But I would hate to have some other wife tell her husband, oh, I don't want to live here, look at all the weeds. It's such a simple little thing to get rid of, I don't know if there's a boardness or some liability against me doing it, fire hazard. Although it couldn't allow weed spraying in the, in the springtime when they're popping up weed whacking, I'm sure. Maybe the city can get around to do it and things up, but I think a little thing like that would go awash a lot of ways, because you've got a lot of people coming here now because of the great job Debbie's doing. Who are from the out of the area, and I don't want them to go away saying, oh, what a beautiful pasture, what a beautiful park, why can't they pull the weeds? It's such. Consider that.
I've said for years, I wish we could hire. Older, mature high school students that come in here in the summer.
Well, Joe used to do it. That's how we first met, he was the guy that did it.
I'll, I'll do it, they still want to get run over?
Karen wants to volunteer as well.
No, Karen doesn't, pretty much she wants to say that there was a lady at a neighbor's. Um, coffee.
Yes.
And she was going to spray really bad, and that's Jerry.
Not that I'm aware of, but I have a friend that, well, I'll let her up with you and you guys.
I meant to change your coffee, but I was forced out of town that Saturday.
Uh, I'll let her know that yours did as well.
Okay, I'll provide. I'll be happy to do it.
All right.
I got the tools and I'm ready.
I got your phone right here.
What can I add, aren't there, aren't the businesses? Um, that's she did, they're running, Russell Park.
My understanding, you're responsible for the first ten.
Or businesses?
Yeah, generally, we, we just, he makes a very valid point, it's the matter. But in the rest of the things that we do, we do basically.
Yeah, if I can speak to that real quick, we, we do spray all that once a year and uh, of all that we have to do, that does sometimes fall by.
I have a yellow vest, I'll come help.
All right.
So get on, it's such an easy thing to do and I think it makes a world of difference, but it was our first impression when we got off the freeway and I looked at Saddleup and she said. Look around. If they can't take, take care of the weeds in the sidewalk, what makes you think that other services are going to be?
The thing is a short staff and it'd be great to have a committee. You know, minded like you to do that, because I've complained about.
I'm afraid of that. Just a complaint.
We did and it just kind of faded away.
I'll start working on this committee here.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, uh, second item, um.
Uh, you're already got five minutes.
You know, anyone want to donate? I'll be brief if I can, um. I live on Ridge View, drive up to Cooper Creek, and I understand a few years ago. There was a slide. So you may recall that slide, I understand it became quite expensive for the city, I think the rumor is that it was upwards of three hundred thousand dollars. To correct that slide and months of work for the city to repair it, did a road resurfacing. Put a culvert down from Ridge View down to South Side to divert the water so it wouldn't undermine the end, like houses almost lost or something. A lot of concrete, uh, pyramids or piling to whatever you call it, put it in its place. Well, I walk up and down the street every day and the gutter has cracked, opened up, and when it rains. None of the water that is that gutter gets down to the culvert, it was the South Side, and I mean, none. It is going under the road, down the bank, and you're going to have another slide there, I know that because I've talked to. John Day, longtime contractor in town, he knows all about it, and uh. Brad Boyson, who's at the top of the hill, is actually retired soil engineer, mining expert. He has repeatedly come down and said, it'd be so simple for the city or someone to come down there with. Twenty gallons of tar and patch that gutter and you would eliminate this problem for a very small amount of money and time.
That's on our to-do list this summer.
What's that?
On our to-do list.
Is it? Okay, because I'm willing to go clean the rocks out of it, make it easier.
We got it, Aaron and I went up and drove and looked at that, I talked to Brad.
Oh, good. Okay, while they're there, there's a little patch just before Ridgewater, it's six feet wide, ten feet long, I know you put it out to bid several times, but I understand the bids get stale. And you got to start over again, but if there's enough city equipment, if you're up there patching that little thing, maybe we could fix the ten by six uh. Pothole that's right in Ridgewater and.
Marked off.
It's, it's painted off once already about a year ago, but it's starting to fade. I know we're not to bid, but I, I assume the bid got stale, that'd be a real nice idea to fix that. You're there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron, Mike.
I love each now, it's hundreds myself for four hours today, I think this does. Um, I also wanted to thank Debbie for our group that you've. Successful. So I'm here to talk about Hastings Village and Business Fund Municipal Code in Part. Eight sixteen one thirty, gathering rubbish and after restoring the upper grid. No person should possess from public or private property any kind of rubbish, trash, debris, refuse, refuse, household goods not intended for outdoor use. Or any substance that would mar the appearance, creating obnoxious odor, fire hazard. Or detract from the cleanliness or safety of the property, so. I would just so in PD last week, my complaint is, I have a complaint about it. And I was told that I should contact Wayne, Wayne Ellsworth, I also was given a card for that code enforcement officer. And I contacted Wayne, he said, any decisions based. On the law statute or ordinance needs to be addressed by the police intervention, so that's the city. So I have a complaint with the city, police department will see where that leads. I attended the last mayor's coffee and the Hastings issue was discussed, I heard a lot of, we can't. Not particularly from the mayor, but others there, we can't monitor the dog situation. Because there's only one animal control officer, we can't keep the citizens from dumping it. Evidently, some of the citizens have found it easier to take their unwanted belongings, sometimes their trash, it hates being thrown down. And we can't stop the villagers from hoarding. Well, we're talking about. An acre of property here, we can't. Maintain law and order in that acre of property, I don't know what the rest of us in the city should expect. So it's not fair to the villagers to ask them to live like this. Not fair to the people who live and work in the area to put up with this eyesore. And it's not fair to the rest of the citizens of Southern, to deliberately turn an area of the city into what looks like third world country. Since December of twenty twenty-one through June of twenty twenty-three, the city has spent in excess of fifty-five thousand dollars on the village. It's an investment that seems to be falling through the cracks, the city does not seem to be proactive in establishing a successful program there. In listening to council meetings, I heard from the council the success story of Cottage Grove. The Cottage Grove Council, however, passed laws covering the homeless, homeless camp, including no alcohol, no drugs, cleanliness standards and. Standards dealing with animals, like only, only service animals can deal out. So a kind of way this message here to. You, you listen passively for the past months is great ideas of unicorns and rainbows was presented to you. But I didn't see you involved in setting parameters, expectations or rules to guide either the villagers. Uncle Heart or the city. As a matter of fact, villagers have their own council, make their own rule. And I, I would. I would guess that a lot of the people down that live in the village. Are there because of poor choices and for them to be making their own rules. It doesn't even make any sense, it's insane, I mean, that's how they got there. Um. So we're not giving hand up, we're just feeding the status quo. I'm a compassionate person and I know that most of you I know, I, I know your compassion people and I donated to Hastings Village. Very heavily at one time, but. It's not getting better, the conditions are getting worse and please, please handle it. And please handle it for the rainy season comes, that's it, then we're going to be looking at at least eight more months of it not being. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Isn't that part of the heart that?
Yeah, we, we got a plan, right, in some cases completely wrong and others, but uh. Yeah, we met, we, we understand the nature of it, these are people that are broken and. I mean, you can drive by and complain about it being messy there, the alternative is it could be messy all up and down. State Street in front of City Hall in Central Park, we got it confined there, these are broken people that make messes. And we've been working hard, now keep in mind, Wayne is a volunteer. And he's only able to do so many hours a day in a week, the rest of it, uh, the council doesn't make their decisions, they make. Decisions on the discipline and order that Wayne has set out for them. Uh, and there is a hierarchy of responsibilities, those that have gone through the program of work, so I've explained this before, I'm going to do it again. This is a three-phase program. So I've explained this before, I'm going to do it again, this is a three-phase program. If you are homeless, you cannot sleep on any public right-of-way in Southern. The law says the reason we can do that because we offer them an alternative, and so we originally said there, set your tent up there. And that's where you can go, however, if you want to be in a little contained housing unit that's enclosed, you sign up to be in a program of work. And get through a program of care so far, and you can be in a contained housing unit until such time as we're able to find permanent housing for you. So we are are in the process of building a a dozen of these little contained housing units. We've got three shipping containers that have been, have little tiny rooms in each one, we're going in there, we're doing what we met last week, we're going to do what's called a reset. We're going in there and we're kicking them all out, we're cleaning the entire thing, and everybody is going to be required to be either in an eight-by-ten. There are going to be no more tents, we're getting rid of tents and you're not going to be able to have anything outside your eight-by-ten area. And so every day when we go there, uh Wayne has now got a new job to us, we're time to give to it as we move towards this. And now we're we're in the process of getting a a fairly large grant, and our intent is to partner with Neighbor Works, I mentioned that earlier. At doing a a diversified affordable housing plan unit development somewhere in the territory of the community. Some of these people who have been through the program of care qualified will come out of there and go into their own place. The intent is to put ourselves out of business, to get everybody, all thirty-seven of those folks, through a full program of care. There are going to be some that are so broken, they just want to be in their little eight-by-ten square, and that's all you're going to get. And so we're working on a system for that, and of course, you have more to say.
Your time's up, sorry.
I I do because um. A lot of what I cut out was what Wayne and Wayne Ellsworth and I talked about, uh but Wayne says he has no funding. He says he has no volunteers.
That's right, you know, he has volunteers, that's not what he said, I know that, and uh he has a whole group of volunteers that are going there to build these little contained housing units.
I can I can bring it to you, what I did.
I I all I can do is tell you what he told us in a meeting last Friday at ten in the morning, when he said he has a group of volunteers. Who are going to go there and build these little contained housing units for them. But I know he has volunteers, but for the most part, he doesn't have volunteers on a daily basis to go oversee them.
He says he has no, he has no funding.
Well, he does now, I mean, he's got funding coming, he's got, he's working on a five million dollar grant, and we got a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment from the Senate.
You know, I'd really hate to see a lot of that money go into what has been. What has been a poorly executed plan for these people, and I'd like, I'd hate to see it get worse, and I'd hate to see it spread out, and I'd hate to see my tax money. Doing the same thing to the last fifty-five thousand dollars that you spent on here doing, which is creating a third world country.
We are following the Cottage Grove model.
No, you're not.
Yes, we are, we're working with them like hand in hand, and we are going to be following the Cottage Grove model, we just don't have the land yet.
Karen.
You suck it.
Karen. Oh, I'd like to step in here, and I'd like to make the suggestion that when funding is available. That we have a dumpster and placed in the area of the village. And simply put, there now, well then, we need to have it enforced that they get rid of, right, all the stuff that they can, and that's. And then that will improve the image for those driving on, right?
And that's all I, and that's all I'm asking for, but I definitely, I was happy to have them live there, I was happy to donate, I was happy to take them blankets and clothing and buy food and take it down. I was happy to do that, but I'm not happy to be repaid by having this look like a third world country.
Agreed completely.
And you said it's going to be all reset.
But I, yeah, I know, but I'm hoping, you know how long it takes the council to get anything done, right, this goes on and on. And and I'm not saying that is as a a slam, it it's just the way government works, you know, you have to do these things, take the attorney vote, wait thirty days. I hope you can get it cleaned up before the rainy season, but I I moved in here October third, it doesn't fly, it was pouring, so I hope you can get it done. The next few weeks, you think it's hot today, in a month, it'll be cold and raining, so.
I appreciate and respect everything you say, the only thing I want to say in our defense, we haven't had any money, we didn't have, I mean, we didn't have a choice, we had to put them someplace. Or let them sleep anywhere they want in the city, and we put them someplace, we're the only city in Douglas County that doesn't have people sleeping on a public right-of-way. And so that's something I'm proud of, now what I'm not proud of is it sat over there, we didn't have any money to pay anybody to go do this. Seventh-day Adventist Church has been a great help, Wayne has been a great help, uh Neighbor Works has been a great help. Uh uh Unqua Health and a number of the other agencies have all helped come to put money in, but uh we're doing this on. The reason Cottage Grove got to do what they do, they got two point nine million dollars from from Lane County and heroin money.
They they also set expectations, the council set rules, expectations, you're taking a bunch of people who have. Had, they've fallen hard hard times and they failed at life, and you're saying, make your own.
Alright, I think so, we're not going to probably get.
We aren't saying make your own rules, that that's just their own council to govern themselves on site, they don't make rules for the facility, that's Unqua Heart.
Unqua Heart is putting this back on the city, so that's what I.
They're what?
Unqua Heart is putting it back on the city, Unqua Heart is saying, yeah, I'm taking the blame for this, but it's not all my fault.
Yeah.
I have a recommendation.
We have an M O U with them.
I have a recommendation, Karen, would you possibly be open to volunteering to get volunteers to go out over there?
There's already groups that student.
Well, evidently, they're not getting the trash picked up, so.
The trash down there, that's the big problem, my, one of the ladies that I talked to is is from Eugene. And she worked with the homeless in Eugene, and she can't understand why we're having this big call for food. When those people are eligible for food.
That's correct, they all get food sent.
Yeah, so why are we all taking them down food, there's a call for a dresser, somebody wants a dresser, there's not much going on there, yes, there's way too much going in.
Way too.
That's why it's sitting outside, all sitting outside the tents, looking flashy.
We are putting up a sign that is telling everybody, no dumping of anything, and by the way, you're on video, and uh Aaron and his crew are getting at me.
Make one thousand dollar fine for dumping, you see how quickly it is. Pay that thousand dollars once.
Right, good point, great, great point, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Big screen TV.
It needs to turn.
There will be a green TV set out there in the side, but we're going. We did something.